Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings? Commissioner Shirley?
Here.
Stand if you can and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the Constitution under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the Citizens Forum. If anyone wants to address the Commission regarding any issue not on today's agenda, give us your name and address. Come on up.
Hello. My name is Janice Norland, 608 East Republic, Salina. I'm here today on the proposed amendment to the Chapter 13 of the city ordinance and I'm asking the Commission today to go ahead and set some dates, first and second meeting. On February 6th, Commissioner Shirley's motion stated that this should be placed, her motion stated, to place the item on the agenda in the next 90 days, to direct staff to look into the issue, have a Human Relations Commission conduct the public forums and provide a recommendation to the City Commission. That was the basis and that was her motion. To date, March 19th, everything in that motion has been completed now. I think that to ensure ample public notice, we, the public, would like to have some date certain as to when the first and second readings will occur for this amendment.
Okay, thank you for your comments. At this point, we aren't ready to bring the ordinance back. As far as I know, we have at least a dozen, maybe more, legal questions out for council and for the city manager, and we have received no response to those yet, but we do plan on giving the public at least two weeks' notice when those come back for first reading.
Now, Mayor, then may I ask what the timeframe will be?
I don't know. I know questions were still being submitted as of last week.
Yeah. I think as important as this is to everyone, we want to do it right. We don't want to rush it, and we're currently researching some key questions that are going to be interpretive when somebody says, "Well, what about in this situation? How will the definition be applied?" We want to make sure that we can give you the right answer, and rather than have, you know, not knowing and then later we just have to figure out what happened. So, we're currently working on those and we're working pretty hard. We recognize that if we can beat the 90 days, you'd like to do that, so we'll, or Carter try to do that for you.
And I think, yeah, we're all aware it's not, "Bring it back in 90 days," but within 90 days and as soon as we're ready, it'll be back before us.
And then can I ask also, based on her motion, it was to be placed on the agenda, how will that be placed on the agenda then? Will the city manager and mayor put it on the agenda? Because apparently, under the way the motion was read, it is going to be put back on the agenda. Do you agree with that?
It'll be back on the agenda, I think, for possible first reading of the amendment to the ordinance.
Yeah. Yeah, the way staff took that motion and that action is that the City Commission asked us to place it on your agenda, so it would be placed on to take action as recommended. And once you get that, you'll be able to determine if you want to modify, if you don't want to do it, whatever you might want to do, it'd be in your lap at that point in time.
And how will the public be noticed up of that, then?
Have you decided that yet, how to give notice?
Well, there's a lot of ways. We do it the same way we do it for just about everything. We'll use the media, we use our website, you know, we'll try to do it as many ways as we can. Utility billing inserts are a little bit tough because not everyone gets billed at one time, so that may depend on...
Media's been all over this. I'm sure they'll be given notice on, like, Salina Post, KSAL, the Journal, everything.
We do the best we can, and then at that point, hopefully, we've gotten the word out and it's up to folks who are interested to decide that they'd like to attend and to do that.
And will it be two weeks in a row, or do you know?
Normally, it's two weeks in a row unless something comes up.
Yeah, it's hard to anticipate because once you get something on first reading, it depends what you do with it. It normally would be, the first week would be first reading, and then the second week, if approved, would be the second reading, but it depends. You may say, if you want to support it, you may then get into the details and want to modify some things that may or may not take additional time, so we don't know.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is anyone else here for Citizens Forum? We can get it going.
Who wouldn't Nico in about help?
We may need to raise your taxes for some new PA gear.
At least for some batteries.
At least for some batteries, yeah.
I can stand over here. I've got something to lean on and that.
Give us your name and address.
Elwin Thrush, 412 West Elm. And the reason I'm here is to rack your brains a little bit. I know two years ago, because I got a copy of a newspaper clipping where the Lieutenant Russ Namer made a statement that it was legal for electric wheelchair to be on the streets. And last Wednesday, he told me that I was 100% not to touch the streets with my electric wheelchair, although it looks like a monster. And I'm trying to find out for sure if it's still on the books, and also try to get some kind of paper that I can carry with me, so that when I do get stopped, I can say, hey, if it's in my paper, that is, I can say, hey, reading weak, more or less.
Mr. Gage, is that something we can look into and get back with Mr. Thrush on?
Yeah, I was going to put the city attorney on the spot to see if he knew off the top of his head.
Oh, do that. That's much more fun.
You'd rather take a look at it.
It'd be more entertaining, yeah.
I like the mayor's suggestion. No, not to be flippant, it's an important question, but I do think we'd want to be sure that we're matching notes with the police department as to the circumstances that prompted whatever discussion occurred and...
I wonder if it just looks like an electric carriage instead of a wheelchair and that's throwing us for a loop or something.
It is sold as a PMV, so it's a personal mobility vehicle, which is the same thing as your smaller electric wheelchairs. Now, I do have here a copy of the 95th General Assembly Senate Bill Number 67 that gave you the right to have it where the electric wheelchair was legal on the street, if you want to see that.
I think we need to check our ordinance and see if we've made that more narrow or kept it broad enough that...
Yeah, and the legislature's kind of played with what can and cannot be on the streets quite a lot in the last couple, three years, so I think we can check that pretty quickly and get back to them.
Okay.
And also need to know is if I'm allowed on the street, which side of the street. The other thing is, what do I do when I come up right of sidewalk and the people never had a sidewalk? Well, if I drive on their yard, then I'm trespassing.
Right.
So, what do I do there?
Mm-hmm.
And there's also corners that still don't have handicap ramps, so how, I got to go on the street?
Mm-hmm. We appreciate you coming down and being so conscientious about where to drive, where not to drive, how to...
For the last four years, or three years, give or take, at my age, I can't remember too well, but I have been driving on the street, and as far as people-wise, regular people, I've had very little trouble with. Most of them wave at me. But the ones I have trouble with is the police department. One will say, hey, I'll check with the supervisor, and then the supervisor will say, "It's all right." Well, this last deal, last Wednesday, was supposed to been supervisor of the traffic unit. And two years ago, he made a statement in the newspaper that it was legal. Well, did it get switched on me without my knowledge?
Well, that's, I was thinking about it. Sure would be nice for you to have something to carry with you, but if we change the law, if the state changes the law, and then I don't know how you...
I wouldn't need to carry it with me, but for my own personal records, even if it's illegal, I'd like to see it, you know, in writing also. I hate to be so picky about it, but they kind of forced my hands on it.
Have you ever been issued a ticket or anything?
No, ma'am, not yet. That's why I'm trying to keep from. I don't want to, you know, force this in a court. I'm trying to find out everything without going there.
Well, if you can get Mr. Bangston and Mr. Gage your contact information, then they can put their heads together and get with you and get this thing figured out.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would think, more importantly, if it's not allowed, we need, and we're aware that we don't have all the ramps, then we maybe need to figure out something to allow him to, I mean, we need to, I think it probably is allowed because I know when we adopted the code, the segways came in and a lot of the other, that's just part of the, I think it was the national code that we adopted, wasn't it?
The...
There was a question.
One hurt that makes it so confusing is in the code book, electric wheelchairs were counted as a pedestrian, and that's the reason, if it's allowed, I'd have to know for sure which side of the street. And one reason I got this big one because of the snow and the rain, plus it goes a little bit faster. I may be able to cruise nine mile an hour, which, you know, for a thing like that, it's pretty fast for a person driving a car, not so fast. But with that extra speed, that means I don't tie up traffic all that much if I'm going with them.
Does it have turn signals on it, too?
Yes, sir.
Does it have taillights?
Yeah. It's got headlights, taillights, turn signals, it don't have brake lights, though. But for that speed, who needs brake lights?
Yeah. Put your foot out, yeah.
It's the same size as a Oakhead, you know? It really is.
We'll check and see, and I don't know even whether it's allowed or not, whether that's a local discretion item or whether the state law just says it's either in or out, but we'll check and see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It'd have to be within the city codes and that.
Yeah.
Because the city don't recognize state or...
Well, we're not going to make you walk. We'll figure something out, yeah.
Actually, that will probably be guided by state law.
Yeah.
It's possible they give cities an option in certain types of vehicles, like a golf cart, for example.
Right.
You talked about that, they do. I don't know about those, but we'll see.
Well, golf cart also travels, what, 30, 40 mile an hour, at least 30 anyways? So, that's a whole lot more speed than what I'm got.
Yeah, it probably depends who you're golfing with.
uphill or downhill?
30, 40, maybe a little more.
Thank you, sir, for coming down. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else here for Citizens Forum today?
My name is Tracy Sin. I'm at 229 South Second, I'm Salina, Kansas. I would like to people that likes to go to the technical assistance on substantial design and development on March 29th and March 30th on the north side of town. So, let me read this for a little bit, please. As a result of a letter of interest submitted by North Salina Community Development, Inc., NSCD, in October 2011, the City of Salina is hosting a technical assistance workshop sponsored by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. This free workshop will focus on key issues and strategize for targeted growth and development in the North Salina area, which will ultimately enhance the entire community. By targeting development toward areas with existing infrastructure and approximate to neighborhood assess and resources, NSCD and the civic leaders seek to use this process to work hand-in-hand with the city comprehensive plan as well as reduce costs associated with the new development. The EPA-led team will conduct a workshop with interested stock market holders and general public to discuss strategies and policies related to sub-area planning with the region. This process will assess community leaders in better understanding the key considerations and factors that guide growth and development. The discussion will draw from EPA publication, Essential Smart Growth Fixes for Urban and Suburban Zoning Codes, to illustrate options, best practice, and key concepts of implementation. After the workshop, the EPA's team will provide the city-specific actions, steps to implement based on conversation and input from the community on March 29th, which is Thursday next week, located at the St. John Military Schools at the Stevens Center, from 5:30 to 7:30. It's overview smart growth and substantial development for the north side of town, whether you live in north side, west, east, northwest. Please, we're inviting you to get your input together, and let's get this thing started. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Tracy.
Anyone else here for Citizens Forum? Okay, we'll move on. We don't have any awards and proclamations today. We don't have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we're on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approved amendments of March 12, 2012. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 126887, authorizing agreement with Frank Construction Company in doing business as Furco Rento to allow their storage of private concrete barriers at the East Crawford Recreation Area in exchange for use by the City of Salina for specific special events. Item 6.3, authorize a partial release and modification of right-of-way easement by West Star for upgraded electrical transmission lines crossing the flood control levee.
Certain item in a commission wants to take off of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Some would.
Yep.
Or seconded, whichever.
Say Commissioner Shirley moved and Commissioner Householder seconded, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0, and we're on to development business.
Item 7.1, first reading ordinance number 12-10632, annexing a portion of East Magnolia Right-of-Way west of the flood control levee.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. We're looking at East Magnolia Road, and I think you're quite familiar with the East Magnolia Road Improvement Project. There are portions of that construction area where Right-of-Way has recently been acquired and the city now owns the property, but it was outside the city limits when it was acquired. And historically, the city has waited on annexation until it had both sides of a roadway, and that's why you see the pattern that you do here. The last annexation that occurred on this corridor was in 1998, and the city annexed to the edge of Eastview Estates and a pump station that the city owns there, and because the city was not annexing on both sides of Magnolia Road, that portion was left in Saline County under their jurisdiction. So, now that that has been acquired by Right-of-Way deed, except for one portion that is owned by the USD 305 as part of a future school site, they have consented to have that annexed. So, basically, we have the statutory authority to take in that piece right there. This is the portion right here that is still owned and retained by USD 305. That property was purchased by them as a possible future school site, and that's located on the south side of Magnolia Road, just to the east of Eastview Estates. So, as we noted, we have the statutory authority to annex this property. There's no resolution, notice, or public hearing required for this type of annexation. We received the consent from the school district to annex their strip of roadway easement. So, the fiscal impact of this would, when the project's complete, there'd be about a half-mile of additional roadway that the city would have full responsibility for as far as maintenance. And in your action today, bringing this into the city would mean that for overseeing construction, access control, traffic control, law enforcement, and future maintenance, this portion of Magnolia Road would be the city's and not, no longer, Saline County's. This is being done in phases. There's another phase to this, to the east and up to Markley Road. The public hearing on that has been held in front of the Planning Commission. We are gathering up a few more consents from those landowners. One of the concepts that the Saline County has not fully grasped is just there's a difference between where we have publicly-owned right-of-way and where we have roadway easement. We're actually dealing with individual landowners. In this case, the City of Salina, except for the school district property, is the owner of the roadway, and so we have the authority to bring it into the city for this particular phase. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about this phase of annexation.
Any questions for Mr. Andrew?
Dean, is that area north of the road going to still remain county or is it going to be surrounded by city?
And basically, you'll have this right here is Saline County, this right here is Saline County, and the strip in the middle will be City of Salina. But the roadway will be surrounded by unannexed property, at least at this time.
Okay.
And again, historically, the city has not forced private property into the city. We've waited till the landowner wants to be annexed, and at this time, none of those owners have expressed a desire to come into the city limits.
So, they approach you on that, not the other way around, on the private owners?
There are means by which the city can force property into the city, but the only thing we're taking into the city is the road, and we're leaving all the private property alone.
What's the taxable amount on those few houses there? I'm joking, Dean.
Don't have a clue.
We could maybe use that extra $10,000 a year, you never know.
Any other questions?
For microphone batteries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'll move that we accept item number 12-10632 as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. That's the Commission-approved ordinance number 12-10632. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 7.2, acceptance of offered easement dedications in the amended plat of the Sonic Edition.
Mr. Andrew, you don't have to go sit down in between each of these, right? Unless you have to pick up some different pile of paper.
They have a different stack for this one. This is a long-written report with a short verbal report, but that little shaded area you see there was acquired by Sonic. As they were developing their plans for their site, they lacked an area for a storage building and for some additional parking, so this was the original plan they had, which was a clean rectangular site. And if you go to the, this is what their site ended up with, where they acquired an additional lot from the Salina Regional Health Center, where formerly occupied by a house. And they approached city staff and they indicated an interest in rolling that property into their existing Sonic Edition plat. So, it is something that's being done at the owner's desire. The owners of this property reside in Texas. They said they wanted to roll that property into their Sonic Edition plat, and we reviewed it to make sure that the easements that we had for our sewer line there were retained, which they were, and that the plat drawing conformed with all local and state surveying standards, which it does, and it's in a recordable form. So, your only action would be to accept the offered easement dedication, which is, this is one of those situations that's rare, but there's a sanitary sewer and an easement there, and the restaurant building goes over top of it because there wasn't any way to reroute that sewer. So, we've made sure the easement is retained in its proper form, and this is ready for your consideration. The action would be to accept the offered easement dedication on the plat and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Any questions for staff? Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
I can figure out how to word it. Let's see, I move we approve application number PO8-10B to accept the offered easement dedications in the amended plat of the Sonic Edition. Is that right?
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Commission accept application PO8-10B, offered easement dedications in the amended plat of the Sonic Edition, a proposed replat of five lots on South Santa Fe and South Seventh Street in Salina. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
7.3, application number Z09-12, requesting amendment to Chapter 42, Article 6, by adding Division 10.2, Public Use District.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a proposed addition or text amendment to Salina's zoning ordinance. It's been in discussion as a possible need for this for some time. The updated comprehensive plan makes a recommendation that consideration be given to having a separate zoning designation for public uses, and we point out in our report that for some time, the City of Salina has had a university district, which applies to Kansas Wesley and St. John's Military School and to the K-State Salina campus. It's designed to accommodate some of the unique patterns that you have in a college or a post-high school setting or campus. And then, in 2003, a separate hospital medical district was adopted, and it applies to the property and operations of the Salina Regional Health Center, and some of the motivations were the same that the, there was a mishmash of zoning classifications that the hospital owned, and none of them fit neatly with what the hospital was doing, so a separate zoning district was created. Historically, in the City of Salina, our public uses and our school properties have been zoned residential, and that has run into some conflicts over time between some of the uses and activities that schools or public entities are involved with that don't fit neatly into residential zoning restrictions. So, this started out looking at perhaps an educational facilities district, and then the Planning Commission said that they didn't think that was broad enough. They wanted to bring other things like parks, libraries, fire stations, things like that into the discussion. And so, what you have in front of you today basically breaks public uses down into three categories, and those are public facilities, those are educational facilities, and then what we have called exposition facilities, and that really applies to what goes on over at the fairgrounds, Kenwood Park, the Salina Bicentennial Center. And we have on the screen there, this is in your packet, but there's just a listing there. These are all city-owned or school district-owned properties, and you can see that there's a wide range of zoning classifications. I think if you looked at a zoning map, and you would find a residential neighborhood, and it would all be zoned R1, and there's a fire station in there somewhere, but you wouldn't necessarily notice that because you wouldn't think of a... wouldn't necessarily notice that because you wouldn't think of a fire station as being a residential use. And most of our parks are zoned residential. The animal shelter is actually in an industrial zone. We have one fire station that's in an industrial zone. So the idea here is that we would use the public use district to designate suitable locations for governmental and educational facilities, which serve a public need, to create a district that accommodates the unique operational needs of public buildings and facilities, and then to ensure that we have sufficient land area in the city for public uses, but also ensure that they don't adversely affect their neighbors. So the Planning Commission wrestled with this for some time, and they don't pretend that it's perfect, but they think it's ready for, that it is an improvement over where we are. And one of the things that they wrestled with the most is what types of public uses should be permitted and what should be conditional. And the difference is that if it's permitted and I have a public zone property next to my residential property, then I should expect that some sort of public use would get built there, but I wouldn't have a hearing or anything to come, especially to look at that. And then items that are conditional uses couldn't be built without neighborhood notification and a public hearing. So just some examples, they thought if you had public use zoning, that golf courses, fire stations, aquatic centers, libraries, parks should be permitted, but things like athletic stadiums, jails, sanitary landfills, water towers, water treatment plants, that those would be conditional, that would have neighborhood notification. And if we use the example of the school district site there on Magnolia Road that you looked at, that property is outside the city today. It's not zoned. If they came in to the city, they would request public use zoning, and all the neighbors there in Eastview and surrounding area would be notified of that. What would not occur would be that when they went to actually build the facility, there wouldn't be an additional public hearing. The public hearing would be whether that should be zoned for public use or not. And then the third one that was also challenging is trying to take all the things that come into play, Kenwood Park and the fairgrounds there. And so the proposed district tries to take into things like animal shows, licensed drinking and dining facilities, temporary overnight camping, trying to capture all the things that take place over there and make sure that they're allowed for under the ordinance. So the Planning Commission, as I said, wrestled with this for some time. They pronounced that they had done everything that they could with it, and they thought it was ready for consideration. So they have hammered out this draft and presented it to you for your consideration. You could concur with their recommended draft and approve the draft that you have on first reading. You could approve it with any additions or modifications you think are appropriate. In other words, if you see something that's permitted and it ought to be conditional, or something like that, then that would be an appropriate modification to make. Or you could refer this item back to the Planning Commission if you think they haven't covered everything, or you could maintain the status quo and say we don't need a public use zoning classification. If you were to take favorable action today, there is a set of sign regulations dealing with signs in the public use arena that is being finalized by the Planning Commission would come back to you. And then Dustin, if you want to go to that public use map. This is pretty small and hard to read, except for the bigger parcels, but all the parcels you see shaded in gold there are owned either by school district, city of Salina, Saline County. All of those would be potential candidates to be changed in their zoning from what they are today to a public use designation. And so what would occur is that those tracks would all be identified, every one of those landowners, which in many cases is city of Salina, but we'd notify stakeholders like Fire Department or Parks Department or whatever. There would be a public hearing to decide whether those properties should be included. There was some question about Sacred Heart and Salina Christian Academy and whether they should be in that category as well. They're currently zoned residential. What the Planning Commission's thought was, was if this draft was approved, then that could be sent to those schools. It could be informed that this is proposed, and they could decide whether they wanted to be included in that or not. USD 305 is in favor of this concept for their properties. So with that, I think I'll stop and address any questions that you have. It's fairly comprehensive. I think if it got adopted, there may be some tweaking along the way to adjust some things that might come up, but I think the main thing is that it would make the zoning more closely match up with the activities that are actually being carried on there.
My question was what happens next, and you just addressed all that, what the next steps would be. So any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple, Dean. Anybody else? I'm sorry, Barbara, I thought I heard somebody else over there. Okay. The one thing, question is now traditionally, schools stay schools a long time. If these uses are no longer used, do they revert back to the previous zoning? Would they, like, would the school go back to residential if it was no longer used as a school, or do we have anything in place for that?
Well, what occurred when we had a number of elementary schools closed was we addressed that when somebody had a proposed reuse.
Okay, okay, so it'd be a rezone at that point.
Bartlett School was rezoned to a planned office district. There were some other examples, the Parsons School was as well. Actually, the Hawthorne School was rezoned to a planned office district, and then that changed again when it went back to residential. But it would probably retain its public use designation till there was some proposal to change the use.
Okay, the other tweak I think that I would do is you've got public facilities, which is P, parentheses PF, educational facility, which is PEF, and then exposition facility, which is PEF. I think I get a little confused, and I think I would change that EF to XF.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be an X.
Okay, XF, yeah.
I think that's a typographical error, but the only part where that would probably take place is over there at the Kenwood Park area.
Yeah.
As we had in our list, the Bicentennial Center is actually zoned shopping center district.
Oh, good.
And the only reason it is was so that we could legally give it a drinking establishment license, and that's probably not a good reason to rezone a piece of property.
Interesting question comes up with that. How will that affect with this XF? Are we going to have to write up special ordinances around that, or?
What we've attempted to do in the EX section is look at everything that's happened over there, and the fairgrounds or at the Bicentennial Center, and to try to identify those and make them permitted, so that there's no question. So we've indicated that licensed drinking and dining facilities are permitted, that animal shows are permitted, that temporary overnight camping is permitted, and so we've tried to look at everything that they're doing there and try to make it fit so that you're not addressing it on a case-by-case basis when it comes up.
Yep. Good job. I think you were working on that when I was on the Planning Commission, weren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been going on for, you can see the case number was '09, so they've been looking at it.
Been a little while.
Any other questions?
Just you do think that is an XF there, though?
Yes.
So we don't need to?
It's not, yeah. The idea is that to help people, that when they see the P, you know, it's educational facilities, that schools will get that, and it is supposed to be an EX, not an EM.
Oh, EX instead of EM, okay, good.
Yeah, so that would be exposition. And if you can think of a better, that's just what we came up with to designate what's going on over there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this?
Hi, my name is John Blanchard. I live at 1117 West State Street. I just have a quick question on this, and it's more of a concern, and that is in putting parks in the same category with schools and sewer treatment facilities and so on, is there a possibility that we might start building, buildings, conference centers, convention centers, parking lots, things like that in our parks? And it's just a concern of mine that it opens a door to have our parks developed, and so just a question and a concern. Thank you.
Thanks. The parks now are zoned residential, right? Is that what?
I would imagine most of them are. I think like with anything, you want to look at the context of the uses around the parks, and quite honestly, you really typically don't see large buildings building those. Those are huge investments that are going to take on other forms versus maybe a shelter coming and going from a real passive park to something more active. So I can't really anticipate that, but if that's a consideration sometime in the future, we'd certainly look closely at what's going on around that park.
Thanks.
That's a good question.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Uh, Mayor, I'd move that we do accept ordinance number 12-10631, application Z09-12 filed by the Salina City Planning Commission, requesting amendment of article 6, is that right? Yeah, district regulations by adding division 10.2, public use district.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 12-10631. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0. We're on to administration.
Item 8.1, receive a report on the fire department accreditation.
Come on, chief, let's hear it.
Mayor, commissioners, thank you.
For me, thanks. Oh, gosh.
With me today is Melody Elam, our administrative assistant. She's going to pass this around. This is a, an award that we were presented in Las Vegas for accreditation for the fire department. This process has taken us a little over two and a half years. Two and a half years ago, rewinding the clock, the city manager set a goal out there for us to become accredited by the Congress of Fire Accreditation International, who has now changed their name to the Centers for Public Service Excellence, and we appeared in Las Vegas to accept this award. But behind that award is a lot of work, thousands of staff hours that we have, all the way from quarterly to monthly to weekly, daily meetings, to get all the materials together to receive this accreditation. The picture that you have up here on the screen right now is myself, the peer review team leader, Scott Avery, and Captain Brent Barton. When we were in Las Vegas, we appeared before their board, board members, which includes a city manager, county administrator, includes a person from the insurance industry, includes people from risk management, and they look all through the documents that we put together and assemble. Essentially, what it is, is that you essentially have to prove what you say you do. And, you know, for many years, we've enjoyed the benefit here in Salina of anecdotal-type comments to our service, people who have received our fire and medical services and said, "Man, you have the greatest team of professionals that we have seen. We enjoy their service. They were fast, they cared, they saved our lives and property, they just did an outstanding job." Well, this takes it to a whole different level. This takes it to a professional accreditation service that says not only do we meet the best of industry standards, but we have a standards of cover that meets as good as anywhere in the country, and that they voted unanimously to approve us for accreditation. Sitting back here is Chief Calvin Kelsey, who's one of our battalion chiefs. Calvin was instrumental in putting these documents together. And Brent, for two years, after we received this award, Brent, for two years, served not only at his fire station as a station captain, but also on days off, in extra time, Brent spent many sleepless nights, many hundreds of hours trying to keep things on track, and he worked hand-in-hand with Melody and our entire administrative staff and our firefighters to get to this point. Today, Brent, that smile right there tells you that Brent's ready to go back and be a fire captain. He feels like his firefighters have done without him his total attention for two years. And I owe him a great deal of gratitude and appreciation for his work and dedication and effort, because when I went out there and asked, who would be willing to be part of this group, Brent was one of the people who held up their hand, and is truly a fire service and a hero to the city of Salina, because he went above and beyond the call of duty. So today, he will transition back to being a station captain, which he's absolutely thrilled about and not having to worry about this. Five years from now, we will undergo reaccreditation, and honestly, the accreditation process is not the end. It's actually the beginning, that we have to file annual performance appraisals with the commission. I was able to attend many of the hearings, and out there in the hearings, they had, Plano, Texas was in front of us, and I had a chance to see Plano's application for reaccreditation. Plano, if anybody knows anything about it, Plano, Texas is a very modern community, grew very fast, and it is one of the few Class 1 ISO cities in the country, and that is a unique, unique thing. They underwent reaccreditation, and they had some hiccups in their accreditation manager, had some hiccups in their process and stuff, and this board stepped in and said, "Well, we appreciate your effort. We're going to defer you for accreditation. You come back to us when you get a few of these things ironed out, and we will reaccredit you." They were accredited first in 2001, again in 2006. So it just proved to me, sitting there, I'm going, they take this really serious, so we need to stay on top of our game. And I think in the long run, it will benefit our department from the standpoint of, we have the best of industry practices. When you look at our department, you will see some of the best things going on anywhere across the country. They left us with 16 recommendations, and you may think that that's a lot, 16 recommendations. Now, in the accreditation process, there's 244 performance standards. There are 77 core competencies. If you fail any of the core competencies, you cannot be accredited. If you fail a substantial number of the 244 performance standards, you cannot be accredited. Well, we had a list of 16 just recommendations. We met all the performance standards, but they had some recommendations. Some of them were as unserious, I guess for lack of a better term. They weren't serious at all in the fact that we need to keep an inventory of our training materials, that they asked us to do that, to where anybody could go out online and look at our training materials and keep it up-to-date inventory. We know where they're at, we just don't keep a listing of them and things of that nature. They asked us to continually keep an eye on the economy, and that when things improve, to look at reestablishing our public education specialist position in a different role, to be more broad-based, to be more EMS and fire-friendly, to look at how we take assessments. You know, we have a chief officer sits on every one of our committees and work groups. The reason we do that is that when we have a chiefs of staff meeting, we have a chief officer who sits on those groups and committees and can tell us exactly what we need to look at for, is planning, budgeting, and how we need to implement changes and things of that nature. What the peer review team and Scott recommended is that we get formal appraisals back from every group, that we keep those together, that we can look from year to year to year. So we appraise them, and formally with a chief officer being part of it, but they want us to do it more formally. That was one of the recommendations. So I can assure you today, looking at this plaque and the work of approximately 95 fire professionals over there, that we are, not only are we the best and the brightest, but we also have something to show for that. And I'm extremely proud of them. I think that the many hours that Calvin labored and the rest of them labored to explain and to show what we do and to answer the questions of the peer assessors paid off in dividends. I did not have to sit up and answer a single question from that review board, which is a great testament to them. So I'd answer any questions that you might have. With that, I want to thank you for your help, because we could not do this without you. Without you working with the city manager and without him providing us with guidance, we would not have the kind of fire department that we have today.
Well, congratulations to you, and thanks to you and Captain Barton and all the guys and gals that worked so hard over there and then took the extra time to go through a two-year process to get accredited. That's a great accomplishment.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, I tell you, Melody's got wild eyes. We've taken and sent her to several workshops and things of that nature, but really what it is, once you get to that point of being accredited, it's kind of like a traffic control person, is that she sees everything that crosses in the department. She's involved in just about every committee, everything that crosses, money-wise, administrative-wise, and so some things we need to capture for accreditation, some things we don't. She's in the perfect position to do that.
Larry, just to kind of give perspective to this, how many accredited fire departments are there in the state of Kansas?
There are, well, today, there's four, including us. Before, there were only three. There was Lenexa, Lawrence, and Sedgwick County. And this process was started in 1986, and about 2,000 really took off with a fervor. But every three years, they rewrite the self-assessment manual. When they rewrite that self-assessment manual, it contains more and more standards, performance standards, more and more core competencies. And so there's only three of the departments in the state of Kansas that's accredited today.
Well, that explains why you guys look so nervous in that picture, when you're sitting before that board in Las Vegas.
You thought you had it in the bag, yeah.
Yeah, that's it, right there.
Yeah, I see you look concerned, yeah, yeah.
You know, just failed.
And that was mandated proof of attendance.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
There you go. And honestly, Mayor, you participated in that. You had a chance to sit with Scott Avery and answer some of the questions from the commission's standpoint, and I appreciate your time and attention and for being there. I can't thank you for your time, most precious thing we have.
It's exciting. Thank you.
I did see the recommended... Actually, congratulations in your part of the packet from Overland Park, wasn't it from the chief at Overland Park?
Actually, Lenexa. The chief of Lenexa said that he witnessed the two days of hearings, that ours was the strongest presentation in the two days that he saw. And of course, they've been accredited for a number of years, and so that was a great tribute to us.
Good, congratulations.
Very tickled. And I will tell you this, there is a full accreditation report that I will get to the city manager that I think he will send to you. It's pretty lengthy, and so we didn't include it necessarily with the packet, but he'll be sending that to you.
Thank you. It's a good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And don't act like Calvin works, that's all he does. He doesn't know how to do anything but work.
We know there's always a woman behind the man.
I'm heavily outnumbered today, too, so I don't even dare comment on that.
I have a couple other fun announcements under other business, too. Got a letter from Emporius State University notifying us that Katrina Paratus, who's a teacher at Central, has been selected as one of the 2012 Kansas Master Teachers in the state of Kansas, so I want to recognize her, if she's watching, and say congratulations.
Right?
Yes, do it, John.
That's right.
And then, to give probably Parks and Rec a little pat on the back, the Arbor Day Foundation has congratulated the City of Salina on being named a Tree City USA for the year 2011, so congratulation to Parks and Rec. Would that be Parks and Rec again? Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we have adjourned. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.
Fanfare for the Common Man by Aaron Copeland. York Master leads the London Philharmonic Orchestra.